All right, it being 6:30, I will call the meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education order on Monday, January 9th, 2017 at the Netherwood Knoll Elementary Cafeteria. Mrs. Wick, would you call the roll?
Ms. Feeny, present. Mr. Uphall.
Present.
Ms. Flanagan.
Present.
Mr. Raymond.
Here.
Mr. Kraut.
Yo.
Ms. Matson. Mr. Zat.
Present, and Ms. Matson called me this afternoon, and she is really under the weather, and said she wouldn't be able to make it, and I said, "Stay home because we don't want what you got." So, as a result of her absence, we had an executive session planned to continue our superintendent's evaluation. I think it's important that all board members be there for that, so I told Gwen that we would bump that to the next meeting, so that she can be present for that conversation. She appreciated that, and so, we won't be doing the executive session as soon as we finish. Our regular schedule will adjourn at that point, so I have proof of notice of the agenda that complies with Wisconsin Open Meetings law that is available with Mrs. Wick if anyone wants to see that, and I would need a motion to approve tonight's agenda as posted.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries by unanimous voice vote. Consent calendar is Agenda Item Number A. Is there any item on the consent calendar that any board member would want removed for consideration or discussion purposes? Seeing none, I would request a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar. So, Mr. Raymond makes the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Feeny seconds that motion. I would note before we vote that we again have a number of generous donations. Rich Hackner donated a car to our tech auto class with Ned Lee's that had a value of about $3,000. We had five donations of $200 for the splash pad. Mike Herman, Krenz Engineering, Bob and Jan Krenz, the Oregon Senior Center on Aging, Dr. James Inneyard, and Molly Matoma. We had a scholarship in the amount of $200 from Mary Sonland with respect to her brother, the estate of Lyman Reynolds, and that's for purposes of providing a scholarship to somebody in the auto area. We're asked to approve a donation from the Marshon family in memoriam of Dave Marshon, who, if anyone had been around our girls' soccer programs over the last decades, you would recognize Dave as someone who was photographing and videoing the soccer teams, and he died in 2011, and his family, Deb and John, Kimberly and Justin, all graduates donated $10,000 towards the J.C. East soccer field. It's a really generous donation in memory of Dave. They had a nice ceremony at a soccer game, the alumni game this fall with the Marshon family there. We have a memorial of $85 to purchase a tree at Brooklyn Elementary in memoriam of Ellen Colbert, who was a bus driver, and then Chuck Hanson has increased his scholarship, the Junie Hanson Scholarship, in her memory. He's increasing that from $500 to $1,000 per annum, and that's an additional contribution from Mr. Hanson in the amount of $6,000. And so, all those are incredibly generous donations to our district. We thank them all for that. And with that, Ms. Wick, I don't think we have any contracts or policies, so I think we can just do, right?
I think so.
We do have contract changes.
Is there a contract change in there? Thanks.
Staffing.
Then why don't you call the board? Thanks, Dan.
Mr. Raymond.
Yes.
Ms. Feeny.
Yes.
Mr. Uphall.
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kraut.
Yes.
Mr. Zat.
Yes, motion carries by a six-zero vote. Thank you. Board policy, moving on to Section B, Board Policy 18004 provides any member of the public with an opportunity to come before the board and speak. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak? In this book, has anyone registered?
No.
Any member of the public wishes to speak? Last call, any member who wishes to speak. Seeing none, we'll move on to Item C, OEA report, and, okay, and please express our condolences to Tracy on the passing of her father, who will get cards out, but if you could let her know that we're thinking about her. Student report, Tessa, how are you?
Good. I just have a quick report tonight. So, I've been exchanging emails with Mr. Raymond, and I'm planning on attending the Visionary Committee meeting on the 25th of January, because I'd like to weigh in on discussion regarding the potential changes to the school day. And just some student council project updates. We are planning for the upcoming annual winter dance, which is February 10, and then we're going to begin preparation for the Let's Make a Difference Week project of the volunteer-based week in mid-April. So, that's all I have.
Great. Anybody have any questions, Tessa, about going on to the student council, getting ready for final exams next week?
Yes, I am.
So, good luck with those.
Thank you.
Okay, and it'll be nice that you could come to our vision meeting, even though you're in the middle of exams. We don't have to excuse you for that, do you?
No, it's a week out.
Oh, okay. So, you're good?
Yes.
Okay, you're done. All right, Item C3 is a report on Fitchburg development, and Phil Swim, if you want to come up, and you can join the board up here, and I'm going to turn the floor over to you. We're going to have you do your presentation, and then the board will have an opportunity to ask you questions, if they have any, and get some clarification, but we're going to talk about some pending developments in the Fitchburg area that are within our school
Also with me tonight is Patrick Marsh, who's the City Administrator, the City of Fitchburg. This has been a topic of conversation for quite some time, and we are ready to move forward, and this is a neighborhood of, what we're trying to do is create a neighborhood that's very complete, very sustainable. One of the elements that would be a very nice part of this neighborhood would be a school, and the conversations that we've had, depending upon what the programming would be from this school district, would determine the, obviously, the grades of this particular school. This particular, this neighborhood that you're looking at right now will eventually have up to 1,500 dwelling units, a combination of single-family homes, apartments, attached housing, as well as virtually every age group, income level. Our goal is to make this a very diverse community, and also to make it a very environmentally conscious community. The area that's designated as 10 acres is pretty much determined by a conversation that we had with the superintendent of what the needs would be. That conversation really was a 15-acre need, but five of that being for recreational purposes, which the park adjacent to that site would provide. As you can see from this map, there's a significant amount of green space, environmental corridor, a wetland, there is organic farming that is taking place, and will continue to take place on this site to create farm-to-table opportunities. So, the things that we've implemented, I think, aside from being a very diverse community, will also allow educational opportunities for kids in this district. So, while we don't see a lot of neighborhood schools, I guess certainly in Fitchburg, aside from the two Verona schools that we have on Lacy Road, this appeared to be another opportunity. Side note, we were involved with the, what became Swan Creek neighborhood 15 years ago or so, and land was actually offered at no cost to Oregon, and it was determined at that time that the district decided they did not want to expand into Fitchburg. I totally understand it. I've been on growth committees with the Verona School District. You're balancing enrollments and budgets and everything else is a very difficult job. Not looking back on that as a mistake, as much as I am looking into the future and seeing what the enrollment is of kids from Fitchburg right now, from just living in the district, as well as by school choice. It's very popular for Fitchburg citizens to have their kids enroll in the Oregon District, and this would seem to be a way of expanding, to kind of bring a school to that community that is a very big part of the district and has supported referendums, and I think a very progressive community that would value having a school, not just because it's in a particular neighborhood, but it would serve Fitchburg and the district part of Fitchburg. So, I realize that this is a very general idea at this point. We are beginning the development this spring, and it does not necessarily include that particular parcel at this point in time, as far as our first phase, but it could be done along the lines of whatever timetable you might have, if in fact there's interest. We'd be very excited to try to accommodate this. Again, it would really be, having a neighborhood school would really be part of a very sustainable neighborhood in Fitchburg.
You know, if I could just add a few things to Phil's comments, that is that this area we're talking about on the east side of Fitchburg and the southeast side, we're also looking at several other developments that are going to add to the district's enrollment. We have the Uptown development off the Lacy Road interchange. We have the Fahy Field development that is just to the west of that, along Lacy Road, which is in your district, and then obviously this and Swan Creek, which continues to grow. So, we see this as an opportunity to develop the east side of the community in a way that's going to be best for the district and for the city of Fitchburg. So, we applaud Phil's efforts, all of the work that he's put into this neighborhood concept. The city has also worked extensively with Phil on some smart code aspects, which allow for these type of multi-unit developments, which we see the future in this metropolitan areas going. So, we'd be happy to answer any of your questions you have.
Charlie?
Yeah, a question. I know the Addison is an area that's developed. I don't know what the projected increase of enrollment from families in that area would be, but is that part of the calculation terms of projection for future enrollment growth?
Yeah, that's another area that I missed there. We consider the Addison in the Uptown neighborhood. I believe there's three more buildings yet to be fully built out and occupied, so there's definitely a good potential for increased student population out of those buildings.
Would you see them potentially going to this school district or this district of building if you were considering it?
You know, when you look at natural progression from apartment to housing, and I think that's going to occur in this neighborhood too, I think there's a good possibility that the current residents that are in apartment complexes in Fitchburg will eventually move into housing, whether that stays in Fitchburg or not, yet to be determined, but I think that's a good possibility.
The other question, I know discussion has developed, as the Times included some conversations or concerns about wetlands and about runoff and what the environmental impact would be. I know particularly some residents in Town of Dunn have expressed concerns. Have you had a conversation with them to sort of work those issues out?
We have, actually, and we had a great deal of discussion with the Town of Dunn and VNR, and came to a resolution that basically provided the foundation for this plan.
What do you see as a potential traffic impact? I mean, that's a fair number of units in a compact space.
And Fitchburg Company, KL Engineering has provided a traffic impact study that will provide, and the two, if I may, the two aerial photos that I said over, the one that shows the entry road, it's actually looking west from the middle of this property, and there would be a four-way intersection, or, sorry, a four-way stop signalized intersection there that's already been determined. So, from a traffic standpoint, and as you can tell also by the diagram, there are two other ingress egress locations, one onto Larson Road and one on the Goodland Park.
The other question, look, are there a lot of lines here? What's the maximum lot size, and what's the mix between multifamily and single-family?
Well, it's about 50/50 with ownership versus multifamily or apartment.
Condos as well?
Yes. The other aerial, if I could quickly, it's just, it depicts approximately the site and it relates to this map here. So, you're looking this way to the north, and those four heritage oaks are just left of the red line drawing, and that would be the open recreational space.
Dan, any questions?
Yeah, thanks. Mr. Swim, right?
Yes, sir.
What's your position?
I'm part of Fitchburg Lands to own the property.
Okay, so, your private concern that's developing this?
Yes.
Okay, and are you also?
I'm the City Administrator in the City of Fitchburg.
Okay.
Yes.
Good. The land that we're talking about here, is that, is this layout fairly well set out, or is this something that's just an initial drawing and that could change completely? Or how solid is this?
The drawing itself is very solid. All of the preliminary plat of the entire acreage has been approved. We would start along the left margin, or from MM, and work our way to the east, and this is approximately, our first phase is this area in here.
What do you see as a timeline for filling this out?
Well, probably about 10 to 12 years.
From now?
Roughly. I mean, it depends upon a lot of variables, of course, with the economy and market and so on.
Of course. Once it is filled, what's your estimate in the number of students, K through 12, that would be living in this area?
I'm not sure what the ratios are these days between apartments and condos and single-family homes, but we could certainly give you a better idea as we go along. And by the way, at full buildout, I'm estimating about $200 million of assessed valuation.
So, is this a, I got Mr. Swim's name, I'm sorry.
Patrick Marsh, M-A-R-S-H.
Is this a school that's going to be accessible to other students who are in Fitchburg? I'm not really familiar with the layout and how our school district reaches into Fitchburg, and how easier is it going to be for other Fitchburg students to reach this school?
Dan, you know, that's a proposed site for a school, and there's just, there's been no determination that a school's going to go there, and we got an agenda item later that talks about population growth and looks at the district in a broader sense. So, I think that's an issue that will be subject to the charge for that task force. I think what we're hearing is that if we want to build a school up there because of this development, you've got acreage that's present there that if the district wanted to do that, we could locate that.
That's correct. So, I want to take advantage of Mr. Marsh's expertise and his familiarity with Fitchburg in asking this question. If we do build a school here, is it going to be easier for other Fitchburg residents to get to the school, or is it going to be easier for them to come into Oregon?
It would definitely be easier for Fitchburg residents to go to this area. There's a lot, as I noted earlier, there's a lot of a current population there and a lot of projected growth in population, so it would definitely be.
So, not just this development, but the other developments that you're talking about, would be easier to reach this school than it would to be to reach the schools that we have in Oregon right now?
Much easier.
I think it'd be easier for the students you have from the Town of Dunn. We're right across the street. The right-hand border is Larson Road. Town of Dunn is on the eastern side of that, so I'm presuming you've got children coming from that area into town every day.
And what, these beach along?
Sure.
So, when you're talking about the orange area on the map here for the school, and then the adjacent parkland?
Mm-hmm.
Is that adjacent parkland? Is that the trees? Is that going to be available for things like, I don't know, a soccer pitch or something like that, or is that going to be planned to be more wild?
That is yet to be determined. Once we, the city would be given that parkland, then we would decide the nature of the use. A lot of that area you see on there is green space, though, would be left natural.
Can you speak to whether you believe the city of Fitchburg would be willing to work with the school district like the city or the village of Oregon does, where we have agreements, where we share the costs and?
Yes.
And also the use of different facilities?
Definitely.
We've had those discussions, because we see that the shared space should be part of a program like this.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
Krista?
One of the things you mentioned was your goals were diversity and environmental consciousness. Can you talk a little bit more about what you mean by diversity, kind of expand on that for us? In terms of, are you talking just types of dwellings or income level within the dwelling? In terms of?
Absolutely. I've had conversations with developers of Section 42 housing. I've had conversations with senior housing nonprofits, as well as for-profits. So, I think from an age as well as an income targeting, I guess, is something that we've got very much on our agenda. But also, there's, there is the, what I feel are being left behind are the, those that are, I mean, are struggling finding a home to buy in price ranges that are just not available in Oregon, Verona, Fitchburg, and we feel that we can meet those, at least attempt to meet those price ranges. And so, the millennial buyer is, yes, it is one of our main consumers that we would like to attract, and some of the things that we want to do with our parks, with Wi-Fi, with, as I mentioned, some of the environmental considerations. These are all things to be done and being committed to, to provide those services and those features to potential residents. Community cars, we're looking at providing, so that not everyone that has two cars can actually use a car for errands and have a membership group to be involved with that. So, it's not just that, this is not going to be your typical neighborhood or subdivision or community that you probably have seen a million times around the community.
Okay, Charlie, Chris, anything else now? Jeff?
Phil?
Yeah.
You mentioned some other developments in the same area. Are you also the developer for those other developments?
I'm, I think Patrick was talking about those, but I mentioned Swan Creek, which was, which became a Madison neighborhood, actually. It was traded to the Madison School District probably 15 years ago, and that's really, you can see that from this aerial photo looking west. But there are parents that I do believe bring their kids to the Oregon District from that neighborhood rather than going to the Madison District, for whatever reason.
Are there other developments or planned developments that would be within the Oregon School District, other than this one?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we have Uptown, which is at the interchange of Lacy and Highway 14. Right now, you'll see a lot of vacant land, but that's going to be a mixed-use development that's in the works. We also have another 48-unit subdivision going in there, starting in the spring, and that would be along the railroad tracks there. We have the Fahy Fields, which I mentioned. I believe that's 140, traditional suburban development, single-family homes, which is going just to the west of Swan Creek that Mr. Swim just mentioned, and the apartment complex that was noted earlier, the Addison complex. So, there's a lot of potential residents, school district attendees that would come from surrounding areas that would likely attend whatever grades this school ends up being, if it ends up being a school.
None of those developments are as large as this one?
No, this is by far the largest.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Barb?
Just looking at my notes here, 15,000, did you say, units of housing?
1,500.
1,500, okay. Wonderful. So, the lots at the north, and are those large home lots, or are those commercial?
Those are multifamily lots up there.
Do you have any large lot, large lot areas for large?
The largest lots, actually, that would be what you would normally find in a suburban neighborhood, would be those that back up to this area here.
And sidewalks throughout?
There'll be sidewalks throughout, yes.
Bike lanes on these streets?
Yes, in fact, there's, they're creating a rather unique way of bike lanes to be employed along Lacy all the way through the neighborhood, but there'll also be a lot of bike path paths, because we have found that those are probably used more than any of the park equipment today in parks, so there'll be an extensive network of that.
Will this be serviced by Madison Metro and Mass Transit Internet?
I would think so, yeah. I hope so.
That's the plan. The plan is to have an east-west transit corridor in Fitchburg, and this would be the eastern terminus.
We, one of our initiatives is an equity initiative that in part looks at diversity in the district and growing diversity, and it sounds like it's ringing that bell pretty loudly, and mass transit obviously brings in a diverse socioeconomic population, so that will be a consideration. Charlie, you have another question?
Yeah, I was wondering whether you've anticipated or planned to have some space for commercial, neighborhood grocery store or things of that kind?
The, that's a good question, Charlie, and originally, this was not to have any commercial offerings, but I believe on the first floor of some of the multifamily will be able to have commercial, because with, at full buildout, there'll be, it could be 2,000, 3,000 people living here.
Look to sustain that, true.
Exactly, and it is difficult, but with that type of population, it could have some nice commercial.
Any other board members have any questions to go with Patrick? Dan?
Just looking at the map, what are these larger lots there near the civic space and then by the road?
Those are multifamily lots.
Okay, these are also multifamily.
Uh-huh.
And then the ones right up to the school? And then the ones right up to the school are also?
Yes.
Great. Well, yeah. I was around back 15 years ago, and I think the climate's different in the district, and we're growing, and we actually have been watching your development for a time and seeing where it's going, to the point where in April, we talked about doing a population growth study and a facility study, and we've been pretty busy through now. And so later on in our agenda, we're going to, we're going to work on a recommendation from our visioning committee to establish a task force that in '17 with a report back to us by no later than December, potentially earlier, to look at not only this development, but other developments in the Oregon School District and look at our building capacities and, and obviously whether we need a new school site and so we're including in this. So we're going to be probably talking with you guys a lot about, about this. Brian and I have been working about, we're a resource person to look at population studies and what this development on others would do in terms of impact on our district population or census. So we'll have a district, a Fitchburg resident on that committee. We've reached out to a person already who's expressed interest, and I'm not going to disclose that tonight, but we're going to have a longtime Fitchburg resident on that committee, so that's kind of where we're going. So we appreciate you, I know you've been working with Brian and our administrative team about giving them the heads up. We appreciate that so that we can jointly plan for our mutual needs down the line.
Well, and keep in mind, this, this is one idea as well. I mean, from a size standpoint, location standpoint, it, there's, it can be a moving, moving dialogue of that depending upon what your needs are.
And it's, we're giving, you know, assuming that passes the recommendation, our visioning committee is to give that committee a pretty broad pass.
True.
Look at everything, including, you know, what type of building, what level, where. So having this option certainly is significant to us. Charlie?
Yeah, I really just following up on your points, Steve. I think a critical issue for the district is to be able to look at this not in isolation, but in context, a much broader arena in terms of what potential development might be coming down the road, what the impact to them would be in terms of the district. It's hard often trying to make decisions if you're just looking at a particular project, a particular proposal, there's so many other movement pieces that we have to consider.
So.
Difficult job.
Yeah, what you've got tying in with kind of what we're thinking for task force, but also again with, with our equity initiative, there are some considerations. So Brian, anything you want to add in closing on behalf of the district?
Well, just first, a thank you to Phil and to Patrick. They reached out to me and we had a conversation late November, and we talked about queuing this up for a board presentation, and I've had the benefit of being able to process this for what's almost two, two months now. And Phil and Patrick and I talked, and I shared information with Steve that we should bring this to the full board. It's actually coming at a really good time because the visioning committee that Jeff heads up is looking at a new task force for student growth and population, so I think our timing is perfect. And one of the questions, I made no determinations on behalf of the board, what kind of school, school would be placed in a potential development? But we did talk about what's the greatest need, and it doesn't make sense for a school district to build a high school and to have two high schools. So it's likely, based on where we are in terms of enrollment growth in neighborhoods, to look at an elementary, maybe a five, six school. So that's really where the 10 and a half acres comes from. And something that the district has really kept their eye on, and districts in Dane County, we've looked at trying to combine it with park space, which really reduces the amount of land that a school, a school district would need for a school. So again, as Phil mentioned, this is a very beginning starting point, but we wanted to provide you with a picture of what the future might look like. So as we do our planning on our end, we have a sense, and the development's starting in March, so we know it's, they're ready to hit the go button and get started, but we also want to factor in what are opportunities for the school district in the future. And I would not be telling the truth if I didn't share with you the number of times that I've received comments from Fitchburg parents about the day that a school is in the Fitchburg area. I'm sure you've received some of those very similar comments. And as a district, we are, we have great depth north to south. When we look at Brooklyn Elementary School, at the Brooklyn Elementary School three miles south of Oregon, I didn't actually measure how far Lacy Road is from Oregon.
About four and a half or five.
About four and a half, five miles, so a very similar setup to what Brooklyn is. So this is terrific information. I know our committee, our task force, about to be task force, will, will be able to use this information. And in the meantime, Patrick and Phil and I and our staff will stay in touch as this project moves forward.
I assume some of those reviews aren't still in stone?
Those are.
Thank you very much for coming.
All right. Thank you.
I see Mr. Hanks from his here is basketball fan, and I wonder if we, if there's any objection, Andy, that we jump up and do the bus contract right away? Because Jim, I'm assuming you're here for that, right?
I'm just flying along.
No, you're not. Andy, you want to, we take that up before we do the WASB resolution so we can get Jim on his way?
So the agenda item that you have before you tonight is kind of a little bit odd timing, although not too different from last year. We've been kind of waiting to know what our revenue stream is for employee raises, as well as now we've been kind of doing the same thing for transportation purposes for our conditions of pay with our contractors. So the contractors were very patient, and we got a little busy in November with some things, and so we're bringing this forward to you at this time. They have not been paid based on these rates, they've been paid on last year's rates, and so that's what we're at right now. They were looking for about a 2% increase. They were aware, obviously, that we provided a 2% increase to our employees, not that they're employees, but kind of from a fairness perspective, that's what we're, they were looking at.
And Andy, the amounts that are included in this are those within the scope of our budget?
Correct.
Great. So Andy's got the transportation contract conditions of payment before us. Do I hear a motion in favor of that?
I'd love to agree.
Is there a second?
Certainly.
Okay, is there any discussion regarding this? Dan?
Andy, how does this compare with our budgeted amount?
With our budgeted amount?
Yeah.
It's, it's within budget right now. The transportation budget can fluctuate, so it's a little bit of a guess because it's based a lot on fuel costs. But right now, market fuel costs are coming in at such a point that if fuel prices stay kind of where they're at, we should have no problem, and they can even go up a touch.
So I know we probably went over this last year. I remember talking about how fuel costs affect this. Can you give an overview of how that works?
So I have to remember, but basically if the fuel prices go up like so many cents, basically, then the mileage rate goes up a little bit like a penny or so. So, and I'm looking for the page right now where that's on here. But basically, this has been in place for 60, 70 years. Okay, 50, 60 years, maybe. So basically, it just increases based on where the fuel pricing is.
Andy, do we have a reason for contracting for fuel or is it just on a day-to-day basis depending on fluctuations?
The contractors go and purchase their own fuel. So contractors deal entirely with the fuel by themselves. I think the majority of them or all of them purchase from QuickTrip.
Would there be some potential savings in contracting for fuel?
We have talked about that. There are some complications with that. Currently, the contractors do have a tax deduction that they take, so if we were to move that to the district and the district would manage that, there's potential for some savings, specifically with a, I think, a federal fuel tax, which we, which no one's taking advantage of right now. But the complications of kind of pulling that apart have stopped us from doing that, as well as some of our contractors also do things for other people, and so kind of trying to keep track of all that would also be, make a little bit more complicated.
Any other questions for Andy? Seeing none, Jane, would you call the rule? And the motion is to approve the transportation conditions of payment that are before the board.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Upka?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Thon?
Yes, motion carries by a 6-0 vote. Jim, thank you for your patience with us. Would you convey that to the rest of the contractors that we have and express our appreciation for that and the continuing great relationship we have? We value it greatly. All right. We're going to bump back to WASB resolutions, and I told Gwen I would take notes of what we talk about during this. I want to spend no more than about 15 minutes on this at the most with this, but WASB has a resolution meeting at our annual conference next week. Gwen will be our delegate there, and I asked that this be put in to see if we could give her any guidance or if anybody had any strong objections to any of those. I think what I'll do is I'll walk through the resolutions real quick to see if anybody has any comments about them. 1701 on page one is just a technical resolution that's repealing outdated resolutions. Anybody have any issues with any of those or questions? Okay, 1702 is again, technical resolutions that come out of WASB to amend outdated language. Anybody have any questions about anything there? Okay. That takes us to page three, 1703, the commencement of school term, and that is something that WASB supports. Any issues or questions there? Charlie?
My understanding of the resolution is basically it allows school district to start middle school K-8 students prior to September on date?
Correct.
I'm just wondering how that works out, both in terms of transportation, family schedules, where you have both elementary and high school students on different schedules in terms of when the school starts?
Steve?
Yep.
It's my understanding at reading this that it only applies to districts that only have K through eight, that don't have nine through 12. So this wouldn't apply to our district at all.
Yeah, but it joins up with, because we do have a resolution filed to allow districts that are K-12 to start earlier. I think that's the position of WASB. So this is just for the purposes of making that consistent parallel. Yep, yep. 1704 increases summer learning. WASB supports, any issues on that? None. Resolution 1705, transportation aid to address student mobility, any issues with that? Okay, 1706, the annual revenue limit adjustments. Charlie?
I had a chance to go to a meeting, it's kind of the public education network last Friday, and they were recommending that districts frankly ask the state to consider significantly greater increases. I think they were looking at the possibility of annual increases of $300 a year now with the expectation that likely go to, but trying to get back to where we were before, all the cuts started coming, we've lost ground over much of the last decade, and trying to see if we can get back to a place where we're more adequately funding our public schools. So I'm wondering, I mean, I wouldn't have any objection to this, but I would like to at least have the word, instead of look at making some requests that would perhaps go beyond, but is in some respects a minimal.
That was my, when I read this, I, it requests amount equal to the percentage increase of the CPI, and I think they could word it that at least the CPI and maybe more as opposed to eliminate.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is really a floor, and that still doesn't get us back to where we were.
I, I didn't have a chance to re, research this, but I noticed that it seems like they want to take a 95% of the average of per pupil revenue limits among the school districts and then allow a school district that's below that to raise their revenue limit by $100 per student per year until they reach the 95%. I didn't understand what we have now. It's talking about a low revenue ceiling that school districts are apparently able to, without referendum, just raise their revenue limits to the low revenue ceiling all at once without having to be limited by $100 per pupil. So I don't know if anybody here has any idea what the low revenue ceiling is as a dollar amount and whether it's close to the 95% that they're talking about in this current resolution.
I don't. I know this is directed towards a flaw in the formula that existed when they created the formula, and districts who were on the low end of the expenditure got caught in that trap, and so haven't been able to catch up since that time. Andy, am I pretty right on that?
I'm sorry, I was reading.
You were, you were watching the basketball score, right?
Yeah, not yet.
Okay. The disparity in the revenue limits, that, that goes to the flaw, structural flaw in the revenue formula that deals with districts that aren't ours and allowing them a chance to catch up?
Majority of what you said is accurate. I think in the previous, probably prior to 2010, what was happening in the state is that they were slowly raising the low, the floor of what people could charge, and they were basically compacting the disparity between school districts as far as what they were spending. Since about 2010, they haven't touched that number, that number, that low revenue amount is the same. So those districts that were at that kind of floor haven't made any catch-up. And in fact, the districts that are passing referendums such as us are increasing the ceiling, and so the disparity is growing larger. So some of the resolutions, if that's the resolution you're talking about, I think are aimed at trying to decrease that, and I, I think that would be a good idea from the state. We're not in that situation, but if that doesn't happen, what I would anticipate sometime in the next decade is another challenge to the school funding formula, simply because the disparity is growing. The last time a, this happened, and Gina's probably more aware of this than I am, one of the things that kind of saved the day, so to speak, and said that it was fair, was that disparity was decreasing. It's now increasing. So I think we are setting ourselves up for problems from a state perspective if that, something isn't done.
This doesn't impact us, number one, because we're not in that category. Number two, it doesn't impact aid to us at all, most.
Well, as more districts spend more money and the pot of money doesn't grow theoretically, then it would shoot more aid to other districts, but because those districts will be spending a little bit more, therefore they'll get some more money. So in that large perspective, I guess you could say that it does, but directly, no.
So Andy, let me ask you, the resolution that we're talking about is WASB resolution that would encourage the state to pass legislation that says if you're below 95% of the average revenue limit in your district, then you can raise up to that 95% by $100 per pupil increments until you, till you. increments until you reach that. Do you have any idea how close the low revenue ceiling that was set in 95, 97 by annual budget is to that 95%? Is it going to be something that's way below?
I think when I read that resolution, they said that the difference was $1,100, but I'm not remembering what the difference, what the top and bottom of that was. If that was between the lowest and highest spending districts? There was an $1,100 number in there someplace.
Is there a summary that we can add?
Okay. I thought I saw that someplace.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Because they do it twice, right? It's kind of in here and then it...
In any case, it really sounds like that 95% is going to be a lot higher than the low revenue ceiling. I would suggest supporting that.
Yeah. It's at the inequity in the formula and we happen to be on the good side of it, but...
I don't know why they would limit the $100 per year to being able to raise it 100 per year instead of being able to raise it automatically up to the 95%. But I would support it as it is, just to allow them to shoot for that 95%.
Any other comments on oh seven, about oh eight, the impact aid? Okay, seventeen oh nine, educational growth and objectives, which seems to tie in with our definition of the four Cs and... Okay. Seventeen ten.
I just, I want to say that I really think we should support that as well. I think it's a great idea.
I'm assuming that unless I hear somebody opposes that we're giving Gwen the nod that we're in favor of the resolution. Yeah. Seventeen ten, measuring college and career readiness. Okay. Eleven, Medicaid direct certification, seems pretty targeted. Seventeen twelve, mental health supports. I wasn't sure on this one as I read it whether the professional development for all staff is dependent on state funding, whether there's adequate state funding. I didn't know how to read that. So I'll follow up with Gwen to ask that. Seventeen thirteen, sparsity aid, any issues? Fourteen, recovery school districts, weapons possession. Sixteen, educational savings account. Charlie?
I just, I feel very strongly on this one, supporting. I think we ought to ask Gwen to do what she can to talk with our representatives at the WASB conference. I mean, this is really, I think, one of the most critical issues because fundamentally it would potentially radically undermine funding for public education. There are a number of other states that have had this kind of education savings account plan, Arizona, where it's allowed parents to take dead money basically, which comes off through funding of public schools and use it for things that by anybody's reasonable estimation are not really appropriate or legitimate expenditures. I mean, for field trips to California, for a student to go to something that is not really educationally related. So I really hope that this one gets some strong support.
Any other comments? Okay. I will pass that information on to Gwen. We've got some questions on seventeen oh six and then seventeen sixteen seems to have some strong support. I mean, I feel the same way you do, Charlie. Okay. Anything else on the resolutions we need to talk about? Other than that, I will convey it to Gwen. All right, from Vision Steering Committee, Student Population and Growth Task Force, and that's yours, Joe.
Yeah, and you'll find in your packet a charter for Population Growth Task Force. This was supported by the BSC last month, passed four zero. And as we heard tonight, the primary impetus for this task force is the development taking place at Fitchburg. I'm not going to read it into the record. I think every board member here tonight was at that meeting except for Charlie possibly, so folks should be familiar with it. So on behalf of the Vision Steering Committee, I move approval of the Population Growth Task Force. Coming from committee that does not need a second, are there any, is there any discussion on this item? Barb?
No.
Charlie?
Yeah, just some question. There was some discussion earlier about the composition of the task force and that's something that I would like to have some opportunity for input, particularly because much of the conversation I think that we've been having revolves around some anticipated growth in Fitchburg. And I don't know whether the members of this task force have already been identified and designated, but I think it would be really useful to have some diversity in terms of representation in that.
And Brian and I chatted about the composition and including a diverse group of folks, including members from Fitchburg, so. Any other questions? Dan?
No.
Kristoff? Yeah. All right. And it was anticipated that we would populate this shortly and get it underway. Brian and I have already talked about resources for the task force to move forward, so. Janie, would you call the roll? And the motion is to approve the task force to move forward along the lines of the charge that's in your packet.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Feeny?
Yes.
Mr. Upka?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Tha?
Yes, motion carries by six-zero vote and Brian and I will work on populating that and communicate with you and get some feedback on that. All right, that moves us into E, discussion items, mental health task force update. And is this yours, Leslie?
And Candace.
Leslie and Candace, come on up and join us and the floor is yours.
I have to cover it up?
No, I'll check it off. I checked that, I checked.
Just so the board knows, we were looking at the new boardroom and Brian and I looking at what we can do. We're going to have flat screen TVs with computer ports, so we're not going to have to go through this anymore with this plug into a board and we'll have those TVs that are going to be visible on the sides and on the board, so much easier than this.
Much easier, but thank you for your patience. So as you know, the last couple of years Candace and I have been updating the board at least annually on what was at first the mental health task force and what is now the mental health standing committee. Because the task force made recommendations upon which the board acted and now we are a regular standing committee to continue to monitor our progress and continue to grow our program to meet the needs of our kids. So once again, I think it's important to always start whenever we're talking about something like this with a reminder to all of us that what we are working on in the mental health task force is really important to who we are and what we value as a community. Our emphasis on the whole child, it's not just the academic component of who they are and what they do, but it's everything about them that we support and nurture in order to help everyone reach their learning potential. And you'll also notice in this particular update, there are a lot of strong community partnerships. So that's another way that this particular group is really honoring the Oregon values. So if you remember from the past, we started the task force in 2013, I think, with an analysis of our current system and then we collected data in order to really understand the scope of the problems or the challenges that our students were facing. We knew some of it from the Dane County Youth Survey, but we wanted to get an additional set of data, which we did, and that led us to make some recommendations to you. And some of the major ones that have had really a pretty big impact on our level of service for students who need it was the additional .2 middle level counselor time. It's split between RCI and OMS. And the addition of a .5 social worker, which was added, as you remember, to our .5 student assistance program person, Teresa Nicholas. So we'll talk a little bit today about really important things that happened due to those two additional FTE components. And then also progress with partnership, partnerships with Oregon Mental Health and Lake City Counseling. One of the biggest things that we have seen as a task force that's now a few years old is really the changing landscape. Not just the changing landscape within our district, but within the state and maybe even the nation related to this particular topic. Because now you listen to it, you hear about it in state budgets and you hear about it spoken about at the national level. This is something that people are talking about now because everyone is understanding the importance of providing this kind of support. So as part of what we proposed when we originally met with you and what has happened now, we have been increasing the awareness among our staff. And mental health first aid is really the way we have done it. We had two people trained as trainers originally, we now have three people trained as trainers. And we've trained over 100 staff members in mental health first aid. It's an eight-hour training. It's required for every new teacher or educator in the district now. This is the second year it's been required. We're offering a full session on January 20th and another session the week of June 12th as part of our five additional professional development days. So it's becoming something that our staff is also more aware of. We've also noticed that mental health first aid is a wonderful foundation, but then we are probably going to be moving a little more toward trauma-informed schools to better support the elementaries because within this training, most of the examples are older children. So we're going to try to split it a little bit and maybe offer slightly differentiated training based on the teachers who are there. We also are continuing to support a healthy social emotional culture through the nurtured heart approach. We have two people within our district who are trained as trainers in the nurtured heart approach and believe me, if you ever wanted to learn more about it, they would be extremely happy to come here and tell you because they're very passionate advocates for the idea of relentlessly promoting the positive. And I think the word relentlessly is a super appropriate one in this particular case because I've seen the training. And we're also now sending two to three district staff members to be trainers for trauma-sensitive schools, so we can add that component as I mentioned earlier. And the high school is continuing with the middle school's emphasis on restorative practices. And we'll get into that a little bit more later when we talk about the role of our social worker. And we've got some very exciting new initiatives happening and Candace will fill you in a little bit about that.
So when we came to you a few years ago, we sort of separated out what we found as gaps in terms of what is an overall gap, what are small group needs and what are more intense needs for students. One of the things that we are doing with Raise Your Voice, this is a NAMI-supported group, the National Alliance for Mental Illness, came and spoke to our committee last year and as a result, we've started a student group up at the high school this year. And this is a peer support group so that it empowers students, the focus is to empower students to advocate for themselves and for peers to advocate for their peers that have mental illnesses. So we have two advisors at the high school who are working with a group of 28 students, some of whom have diagnoses and some of whom are just interested in supporting their peers, 10 leaders. And they're starting out, they're just doing bi-weekly meetings right now and they're working toward figuring out what they want to do to help with the awareness piece. So next week they are doing, maybe even this week, notes at the lunch room where they're encouraging their peers to advocate for themselves, to take care of themselves during stressful times like finals week. So there will be a message every day for them to take care of themselves. And then they are going to participate in a training that can take them further into, it's called Honest, Open and Proud Training for Student Leaders so that they can help each other start meaningful conversations about what they need for mental health needs. We have, as Leslie mentioned, very strong partnerships with a couple of counseling agencies in town. So we right now are working with Oregon Mental Health and Lake City Counseling and they have worked really diligently at getting insurance coverage for as many providers as they can. They are currently seeing students at Room Corners, Middle School and High School and those are students that we started out trying to support as best we could, but these are students who couldn't get access to counseling outside of the school day, so they are being seen at school and the services are being covered by the insurance providers. So we have at least nine students at the middle school, 11 at Room Corners and then a number of students at the high school as well. I don't have a specific number for them, but they have worked really hard at trying to find insurance providers that can be covered for all of our students. There's one that they are continuing to work on at the state level to get the, you know, the neediest students in that particular insurer that we don't have access to yet. Building bridges is probably something that you've heard about in the news. This is a program that is Dane County-supported that provides social work services at a tier three level, so a very intense level of service to students 4K through eight that need wraparound services through social workers. It's a collaboration with Catholic Charities who does the hiring of the social workers and other districts in our area that are currently accessing bridges are Madison, Middleton, Sun Prairie, Verona, Wisconsin Heights, and we are anticipating participating as well as Mount Horeb and possibly Deerfield. So we don't have the details totally figured out on that piece, but that would be an access to a service that we don't have as much support. We right now have the .5 social worker in our district. This would provide us access to two additional social workers for that 90-day wraparound care for our neediest students. And that would free up our social worker to probably spend more of her time at the 912 and Oasis level. So as Leslie mentioned, you approved last year for us to have a .2 increase in counseling and that has really made a difference at Room Corners and at the middle school. They started out by doing a survey of strengths and challenges with the students in seventh grade and they came up with huge numbers of students who expressed concern for emotional and anxiety concerns. So they went into the classrooms and did some strategies on coping and dealing with emotional and anxiety-related issues. And then they took the neediest 20 students that had more significant needs indicated and those students all received individual interventions either with the guidance counselors, the school psychologist, or were referred to the agencies that are helping us in the collaboration partnerships. They also have increased the number of groups that they were able to do interventions through group work. They were able to do an additional four at Room Corners and additional three at the middle school. And they also did some targeted classroom instruction at both eighth grade and seventh grade levels that they had not been able to do before. So they really, really, really made an impressive list of services as a result of that .2 increase. And we also asked for the .5 increase in social work services. And we also asked for the .5 increase in social work services, and that has been something that has been spread K-12, pre-K through 12. She currently has a caseload of 28 students and families that she's involved with, so that might mean meetings at school, it might mean connecting the families with services outside of school, meeting with families regarding resources that they have or need to get access to. So she's working currently with 28 students. She really has been at the forefront also of leading the student services group in trauma-informed schools. She's probably going to be one of the people that goes through the training on trauma-informed practices and also is interested in being a leader in restorative practices at the high school. So you've seen that in operation at the middle school for quite a while, and the high school is really trying to get a student group up there and let the high school staff train as well.
For K-4, in addition to the FTE allocations that we've discussed, there have been other changes too to increase our tier-one supports. And the first is something called the Second Step Curriculum. It's being implemented, K-4, but also 5, 6. And that is a curriculum delivered by the guidance counselors that addresses social-emotional learning, self-regulation. And it's very much supported by some of the other strategies that we use and are taught by guidance counselors, such as zones of regulation. And it's also important to note that it's not just guidance counselors who are teaching things like the zones and mindful practices and nurtured heart. These are things that are being now, are now at the classroom level, that they're becoming part of the teacher's repertoire of skills also. And there's also a program that we've had for the last couple of years, Bullies to Buddies, which is helping students with some, helping them gain social skills and different adaptive behaviors. So we've been able to meet that need also. So what we want to make sure everybody knows is that this is an area that's been receiving increased attention, and we certainly hope that that leads to increased funding to support student needs. However, we were a little bit ahead, thankfully, and we were able to put some things in place due to the board's support. And you can tell today that even the small things that we have done have been able to reach a large number of students that we weren't able to reach otherwise. Just think of the impact of that .2 guidance counselor. You know, we said specifically that the role of that person was to implement a middle-level depression and anxiety screener and assist students who were identified through that screener. And that's exactly what they did, in addition to a multiple, a list of multiple other things. So that is where we're at right now. Hopefully, soon we'll be able to give you more information on building bridges. We don't have enough information on the program to give you a lot right now, not because we just are clueless, but because they are not sending out information to participating districts yet. They're still getting their, they being the county, all of the information together for us.
Is that done in terms of shared services contract that we pay some money like you was?
Yes.
And what would you estimate would be our cost if we were fighting to share?
Well, it depends on whether or not we share with another district. If we share with another district, then the two social workers would probably cost us $30,000 a year, which is pretty great for two full-time FTE. If we're alone, then it would be, you know, obviously more than that. But we haven't been told yet whether or not we're paired with another district or we're alone.
Barb?
I do have one question to add, is do you, are you anticipating at some point you're going to have some ways to measure whether students who are getting special attention in these groups as they get older are being successful at using these techniques?
We talk about that all the time, actually, how to measure something that's sometimes very difficult to measure. So yes, that's constantly on our radar, and Candace, as the head of the student services program, can talk about it there.
It's easier for us to try to do a pre- and post-test measure that is, you know, immediately following the intervention. It is a little bit trickier to get results down the road for something that was happening in seventh grade, for example. CBITS has, CBITS, which has been our longtime survey at sixth grade, and then an intervention for trauma-informed, trauma intervention at sixth grade level, they have a post-measure that's three months out. And that's about as long as we've seen those measures. But we will continue to try to figure out if there's something that we can track reliably that would reflect that measure. I don't know what it is exactly, because there's so many factors, you know, there's attendance, there's grades, there's so many things that, I'm not sure you can always attribute it back to one intervention, but we will work at it.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, and maybe just from my own knowledge, but in terms of identification or intervention, is it, the student is exhibiting something, a family member comes to you, a staff identifies something, what is the most common or where are you finding you find out about the need?
All of those things, but like, for example, the seventh grade went through a screening, and it was based on the student results. So it was their responses to the questionnaires that brought in, you know, the need for, some 220 students were indicating high emotional and anxiety concerns. So then they did the classroom level. But there, when they looked at the data and funneled it down more, then there was 24 students that needed to have more intense intervention. So where we're doing screeners like that, we're getting pretty significant numbers. But there are also parent referrals and staff referrals that counselors and sites are responding to.
But with anything else, it comes down to relationships and making sure that students feel comfortable enough going to an adult and saying either, "I have my own concerns," or "I'm concerned about my friend." And making sure parents feel comfortable enough to call the school and reach out for help. It all goes back to relationships.
I think it will be interesting to see the NLE group and Raise Your Voice group and see if that is helpful and students helping each other out.
And then in terms of intervention, does it tend to occur at a certain age? I know it probably is dependent, but would it be, could we move the needle more in terms of help if we did more earlier in elementary than later on? I'm just talking about resources or emphasis.
Our Second Step Curriculum is a tier-one, so it is a universal. So that is part of what we're shooting for, is to offer students more exposure to skills and practice for social-emotional regulation in the lower grades. Now, as far as social work concerns, that's what I hope, building bridges is there for us to help fill a gap. And it's not that our social worker now does not work with elementary schools, she certainly does. It's just that it would be really nice to have her concentrate on the older grades and have two more people to assist us with the younger.
And the last question is, in terms of our student population, how would you look at mental health? Is it a bell-shaped curve where there's a lot of kids that have some mental health need but not, not a lot that are, don't have mental health need and not a lot that are more severe? Or is it a, I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense of our student body and what is the universe of mental health need and severity?
I think when we looked at the Dane County Youth data, we had quite a significant response for anxiety across the board from probably, would you say, fifth grade on through all the grade levels. So I think we saw pretty high numbers for that specifically, depression as well.
Although I think that our school district is a microcosm of society in general.
Yeah, not significantly different than our other big cities.
Right, and I think that what we are seeing is what the rest of Dane County is seeing also.
Can you talk about our school district being a microcosm of the state or at least Dane County? Families are kind of a microcosm in the school district. And I'm wondering whether you see any relation between the need for mental health services and two things, the success with academics and the diversity or the racial profile of the student.
I don't think we see any connection related to race or ethnicity. But we certainly do see the connection between mental health needs and academics. Because oftentimes, when we're in a meeting and we're talking about students, one of the first things you notice is a drop in academics, and then you start asking the questions about social-emotional health. It doesn't always go that way. There are lots of kids who are very anxious, however, their grades are always really excellent. And when it comes to that, then it's often self-reporting or teacher observation or parents saying, "Here's what I noticed, how can you help us?" Anything to add to that?
So the reason that I was asking about the racial component is because I know we, like other districts in Wisconsin, in fact, Wisconsin as a whole has an issue with disparity in academic success, depending on the race of the person. And thought that you may have seen some correlation between the need for certain types of services and the racial profiling, profile of a student.
No, not yet. I mean, having, being able to offer services within the school, there's often a socioeconomic link because a lot of times the parents are working one, two jobs or night jobs or whatever, and it's very difficult to get them to counseling. Or they don't have the transportation for counseling. So there's probably a connection with socioeconomic and in-school services, but that's really the only thing that I see.
Joey? Yeah. Obviously, we are limited in terms of how much time we see the students. A lot of issues, obviously, that we end up having to deal with in some respects as a district start in the home. And I'm just wondering how effective that connection with bridges in terms of involving parents I know who may be often very busy and maybe reticent to expose themselves to problems that they perhaps don't have the time or don't really want to deal with because of all the other pressures that are going on. I was struck in particular by some personal experience of talking with some students. Depression is an issue that I'm sure correlates often with academic pressures, also with the home support system or lack thereof. And I'm just wondering if most of the efforts that we're putting in addressing the time that we have the students when they're in school, and I'm just wondering how effective we are in terms of reaching out to families, in terms of helping families also provide the kind of nurture and support that students really are going to need.
I think there are a couple of great ways to think about that, and the first is our community education programs. Because through the work of Amy Miller and a lot of the talented people she works with, we offer a lot of parenting supports through community ed. But I'd also have to say that our social worker, she is doing a lot of home visits and home connections. So when students are to the point where we're considering sort of, we call it tier-three services, meaning there's a lot of intensive services around, wrapping around one individual child or sometimes one family, at that point, Teresa is, our social worker Teresa, she's involved with the families in a pretty close and intimate way. You know, she is visiting them in the home, she's talking to the parents, she is helping them build their internal capacity to support their kids.
I know teachers are also required to report in some cases where there's suspicion of perhaps child abuse or some similar way to that. I know that occasionally it's child protective services has been involved. How is that relationship between our district and the community in dealing with those kinds of situations?
I think our relationships are fine. I think we rely a lot on our social work and ed counseling staff to help teachers navigate those pathways. But I think we report when it's needed, and that seems to go smoothly. We try to follow up if we need to with the students.
I'm assuming that training for teachers and for staff is a real fundamental part of orientation in terms of recognizing, dealing with, and responsibility that I have.
Reporting child abuse training is a requirement, so. Absolutely.
Thanks for coming on and giving us the presentation and letting us know how you guys are proceeding in the mental health area. And it's comforting to hear that when we allocate resources that it does make a difference. So I'm assuming you're going to continue to reassess needs and talk with Brian and Andy if we need other resources so that they can get put into our priority file? Okay. Great, thanks. Thank you for the presentation. That takes us into discussion item, the two committee reports, policy committee, if you have anything to report tonight.
We met, game writer, and discussed policies, 74 board governance, and do not have any changes to recommend. We also discussed the policy related to gifts and memorials, and we had a very good discussion with first draft of a policy revision. And we asked Gina to go back and make a few revisions, and we'll be looking at that again at our next meeting, which is the first Tuesday in February.
Great. Thank you. Visioning Jeff?
We met on December 21st. We passed the charter for the Population Task Force, which the board approved tonight. And most of the meeting was taken up with potential transportation changes for 16, 17, and as they may relate to school start and end times. And we're going to continue that discussion the next meeting on January 25th. Additionally, on the 25th, we will continue our discussion, potential changes to the school day, which we began in November, which Tessa has some ideas on. And we may also have another task force charter to discuss on the 25th, not next week.
Great, thanks. Moving on to agenda item F, informational items, school board election update. And Brian, this is your report?
Yes. The school board election is set for April 4th, 2017. Barb Feeney, incumbent, is the sole candidate for the town of Dunn, Blooming Grove, and Rutland, also known as Area 3. Gwen Maitzen is an incumbent, and she'll be running along with Tim LeBrun for the village of Brooklyn, towns of Oregon, Montrose, Brooklyn, and Union, also known as Area 4. And Courtney Oderico will be the sole candidate for the Pittsburgh, the city of Pittsburgh, also known as Area 2. And tonight, Janie and Krista picked, selected the ballots or selected the order for area number four. So they will send that information to the local municipalities, and we are all set. There's no primary, and we are set for the April 4th, 2017 election.
Great. Anybody have any questions? All right, superintendent's report, back to you.
A couple of quick items. We are going to have another hoop house in the district. And one of our teachers, Lisa Ikey, she's a first-grade teacher, she was a third-grade teacher. Her and Kim Sorbay wrote a grant proposal to Lowe's, the Home Depot like Menards-like big-box store, and they are going to provide us with a $4,200 a grant toward a hoop house that will be placed in the Netherwood Arbor region. So we're excited about that. The Chamber of Commerce, the Oregon Chamber of Commerce Dinner is set for Saturday, January 28th. So if you and/or your spouse or significant other would like to attend, just let Janie know. And Judy Knutson told us the final date is this Thursday, which is January 12th. So if you're planning on attending that Oregon Annual Chamber So if you're planning on attending that Oregon Annual Chamber of Commerce Dinner, please let Janie know. We were excited on January 3rd to be in the new middle school music classrooms. All three classrooms were utilizing the new facility space, and that was, it was exciting for them as well. We will be moving into the middle school science STEAM area, along with the technology education area in the next several weeks. So that was a pretty exciting day for our kids and for our teachers. Jacob and his partner David submitted a segment to Channel 47 for Message for Teens, and you can still vote until this, until the 20th, I believe.
Yep.
So continue to vote, and this is one of those times where it's actually legal to say vote early and vote often, because there are no limits on the number of times you can vote, and we hope Jacob and David have the opportunity to represent themselves in the Oregon School District with that message. Then the last item, you all know we had a small fire at the high school on Thursday. Good news, there were no injuries. We evacuated students, and everyone was safe. We don't, we were back in session on Friday morning when the, after the fire department gave us occupancy to the building, which was actually later in the day on Thursday. We're still pending the final cleanup bill, and Andy keeps, Andy's gone, he went to the basketball game, but he's working with our insurance company. This is going to be a claim that's over $5,000, that's our deductible, that Andy has set up, which is very common for public schools. And we're working on the cleanup bill. Once we have a third cleanup bill amount, we will let all of you know. So we ended with a lot of excitement last week. Charles?
Any idea in terms of how that started?
Yes, but we are not able to discuss that.
Great, thanks, Brian. Closing, future agenda for January 23.
Steve, I noticed one thing we missed.
Go ahead.
We usually have an informational item, and I forgot to mention this to Janie, because this is the first meeting post the WASB State Convention, we usually do a little roundtable discussion, and
Yeah.
Board members, and I share something that we learned at the state convention. So we'll add that before Superintendent's Report under informational items.
Yep.
And then the other thing, Board members, that you see is open enrollment spaces. We will be back to you. We're meeting this week. Katie Heitz leads our effort in terms of identifying open enrollment spaces for next year, and we give you a detailed report for your approval, right? Or don't, we still do that by policy.
And then we'll need to bump the closed session from tonight, make a closed session for next meeting. Any Board member have any items they want us to address at the next board meeting?
You can do away with a vision report, because we have more than that between now and then.
Okay.
Same with policy.
Yep, so we will have those committee reports take those off.
Otherwise, let us know by the Wednesday before the meeting, that's usually when Steve and I take a look at things.
Okay, check out. Barb?
Nothing.
Jeff?
Nothing tonight.
Charlie?
Dan?
Nope.
Looks like we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All favor signified by eye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. We are adjourned.